Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for November the 19th, 2018. We will begin our meeting tonight with citizen comment on items that are on the agenda. And when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and adjust the mics so we can hear you clearly. We want to record all of our comments from the public. So, our first speaker tonight is Terry Railton and Jeffrey Berg on deck. Have you signed up to speak this morning or this evening?
I didn't.
You're not speaking this morning, okay?
This evening.
This evening. Okay. So, our first speaker will be Jeffrey Berg and Connie Berg on deck.
Okay.
If I could, all the speakers tonight, if you could say your name, spell your last name, give your home address, and hold your mouth very close to the microphone. Thank you.
Jeffrey Berg, B-U-R-G, 5195 Swadley Street. As reasonable people, we recognize that all the open land around our area was going to infill someday. When we tried, however, to participate in the governmental process to shape the development of our community, we discovered some disturbing trends. Open space that was part of the original open properties was land swapped to put enough infill parcels together for developers. Original master plans from cities did not show hundreds of apartments, nor did they show 52nd Avenue being pushed through east of Sims. There were reasonable projected residential development densities and road development plans as not to place undue burdens on existing residential neighborhoods. Original master plans for large developments did have street plans and plans for densities that would have been reasonable and consistent with the development in the area. However, the original master plans from the cities had been repeatedly modified and not effectively communicated. These master plan evolutions were generally not publicly shared, especially with the people that were directly impacted in the area. The changes were discovered when attending public forums to hear about new large developments or in a newsletter photograph about an unrelated issue. Comprehensive density and traffic studies were not conducted between governmental entities to ensure the overdevelopment would not burden common infrastructure. Only one development and the area bounding the development was studied at a time in order to receive approvals for development. Even though local residents at repeated public forums requested multi-jurisdictional comprehensive infrastructure study before more large developments were approved. Plans for major infrastructures such as roads have still not been finalized. That's why we're here tonight, well after many of the developments have already been independently approved. This is a very backwards process that the master plans were supposed to help with. Meetings to find out information or gather public comment on such items such as road development were not publicly communicated, even when we are repeatedly reaching out to the city officials and asked to be included. An example was what we have up on the website tonight that was just recently posted about the proposal that we're going to end up talking about and hearing about here today. We didn't know that that was up there. We stumbled across it when we were looking for the time for the meeting. There are more effective alternatives than what's being proposed and in the document before you tonight. Please do not negatively impact the residential neighborhoods by shoehorning a 3,000-plus car per day expressway from Ward Road along 52nd to Kipling through the middle of a residential neighborhood. There are alternatives that'll work. One counterproposal might be the bike path access of 52nd Tabor. Close 52nd to vehicular traffic at Tabor, and that would allow you to honor the agreements that are in place with the property owners in the area today. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connie Berg and Patty Davis on deck.
Connie Berg, woo, that's loud. B-U-R-G, 5195 Swadley Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Like I just said, I live at 5195 Swadley Street, located at the southwest corner of 52nd Avenue and Swadley Street. Along with many of my neighbors who are here tonight, I will be directly impacted by the decisions that will be made by you tonight regarding the Ward Station street improvements, which include Ridge Road, Tabor Street, and 52nd Avenue. Many of the residents in our neighborhood have lived here for well over 25 years. We've made this corner of Wheat Ridge our home because we love the quality of life here, and we are all concerned about how our lives will be impacted due to the street changes that will be forced upon us. This area is unique in that it involves three separate jurisdictions: Arvada, Wheat Ridge, and unincorporated Jefferson County. Many of us have been attending planning and council meetings for all three jurisdictions just to stay informed regarding developments in our area. We've developed our own cross-jurisdictional neighborhood network and make sure we keep each other informed when we hear any news. It's interesting how many times one jurisdiction points fingers at the other jurisdiction. It seems that no one wants to take full responsibility for what's taking place in our area. When the commuter rail was on the horizon, we attended meetings that showed plans for the roads in the area. These plans focused on Ridge Road connecting through the station to Ward Road and a realignment of Tabor that would minimize the traffic in the existing neighborhoods. Over time, these plans morphed into something other than what was originally proposed, and neighbors were not kept informed of the changes. RTD and the Denver Transit Partners were allowed to design the intersections along Ridge Road, and they didn't include a center turn lane, so vehicles wanting to continue east or west are stuck behind a turning vehicle that is stopped by the train. Wheat Ridge failed to secure approval from CDOT for a traffic signal where Ridge Road connects to Ward Road. These oversights have now led the city to look at the 52nd Avenue connection to relieve traffic from Ridge Road. Thanks to the new intersection at 55th and Kipling, which provides a path from Kipling through Red Rocks Community College and Skyline Estates, 52nd would actually become the preferred route from Kipling to Ward Road with an estimated 3,000 vehicles per day passing in front of my house. I don't believe that I should be forced to give up my property and my lovely quality of life because the city of Wheat Ridge failed to do its part to properly oversee RTD's designs and secure the appropriate approvals from CDOT. The FastTrax website still says that there's going to be, for the station, three points of access added to the station: east entrance at Ridge Road west of Tabor, the west entrance at 50th for access via Ward Road, and the north entrance, access at Taft. And it says, "As part of the roadway extensions for the new entrances, traffic signals will be installed at intersections," on the RTD website today. So, city of Wheat Ridge entered into an agreement in the mid-1990s that prevented 52nd Avenue from ever connecting east of Sims Place. Oops. Okay, one more thing. Respectfully request that the city stand by the agreement they made, and please do not include the 52nd Avenue connection in your plans going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Patty Davis and Michelle Byer on deck.
My name is Patty Davies, D-A-V-I-E-S. Live at 5210 Tabor Street in Arvada in Rainbow Ridge at the intersection that's being discussed. I do have a cold, so I'm not going to talk very long. The first two speakers captured most of my thoughts, but Arvada clearly stated that our property would not be touched by the development, and your plans, which we just saw tonight, show that you're going to be condemning my home, which means that the 3,000 cars that will be driving by every day will be, instead of 30-plus feet from my window, will be like five or 10 feet from my bedroom window. So, we bought this home as a retirement home. We did not buy it to be a busy intersection. And as I think Connie so nicely articulated, this was not a well-thought-out plan, and 52nd should not go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Byer and Gary Duncan on deck.
Hi, I'm Michelle Byer. I live at 11721 West 52nd Avenue in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I'm basically your legal problem. I have several documents up here that were signed with the city of Wheat Ridge back in 1998. I have reception numbers for you. I've also given all of these legal documents to Larry Matthews. Where the city of Wheat Ridge came to me, annexed my property into the city of Wheat Ridge. I was unincorporated Jefferson County, because at that time, the city of Arvada was wanting to push 52nd through into their subdivision. The city of Wheat Ridge came to me, annexed my property, with the condition that that 30-foot right-of-way out front of my property would never be used for anything other than open space. The city retained the right to put in a 5-foot sidewalk through that piece of property out front. Your paperwork tonight's talking about a 40-foot right-of-way. The asphalt that's on 52nd now is only 21 feet wide, so obviously, to get the other 20 feet on both sides of that narrow section from Tabor over, properties are going to have to be condemned. And the 30-foot by 90-foot piece of property that goes from Sims East was vacated to the city of Wheat Ridge by me on the condition that it would never be used as a right-of-way. In 1994, the city council signed a resolution regarding 52nd Avenue, and I also have a copy of that. That's Resolution Number 1438, series of 1994, by where the city council of Wheat Ridge, it's long and I don't want to use up all my time, but states that the city of Wheat Ridge would never allow that thoroughfare to go through to benefit the city of Arvada's planning in that field to the east of us, which is now Haskins Station. My documentation is an actual special warranty deed that is Exhibit C. It is recorded with the city of Wheat Ridge. It is Wheat Ridge Deed 483. And in it, it says, "To have and hold the said property will all apprentices thereunto belonging unto grantee its successors and assigns forever for open space purposes only." And the grantor for itself its successors and assigns covenants and agrees to and guarantee its successors and assigns to warrant the defend and quiet and peaceful possession of the property by grantee its successors and assigns against every person who lawfully claims the property." And it goes on and on and on. About my legal rights as what I can do to the city, it's all in your paperwork that your attorney drew up with us. I believe your attorney, Doll, is still the city attorney. He's the one that did all this legal work with me back in 1998, and I have all of it here if you'd like to see it. I've also given every single piece of paper to Larry Matthews for you all's consideration. Please don't disturb our quiet little neighborhood just because Arvada wants the right-of-way to get to the light rail. Do something to widen Tabor where you've got an entire field, and it's not our little tiny community's problem that Ridge Road wasn't addressed before all of this started. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Duncan and Gary Crocker on deck.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Gary Duncan now. Mr. Crocker is not going to speak.
Oh, okay. Gary Duncan, I am 5355 Union Way. I am in Arvada. I'm about two lots outside of Wheat Ridge. In 1997, RTD started a study of the Gold Line. In 2004, the Rapid Transit District was approved. In 2009, Wheat Ridge put a TOD into their concept plan and comprehensive plan. In 2012, the Gold Line started construction. Despite all this timeframe, there has not been any effort in advanced planning to deal with the advanced traffic. I have never seen a developer present a traffic study that didn't say existing infrastructure could handle it, or not, or at least with minor improvements. If that, if these studies are so good, why do we have all the congestion we have on 44th and Tabor, Ward, and 52nd? I mean, it's a nightmare in this area. Wheat Ridge has approved Hans Ranch, Jolly Rancher, and other projects along Ridge Road, and Arvada has approved Haskins, all feeding into West 52nd to go south on Ward Road, because it's the only access to I-70 unless you go down Tabor. Fact, there's over 2,700 million, not million, 2,700, excuse me, multifamily units planned along Ridge Road and 52nd between Ward and Kipling. It seems to me that the developers are in control. Without improvements on Tabor, why in the world was Hans Ranch approved without a right-of-way to improve the west side of Tabor to get down to 44th and I-70? Wheat Ridge made a promise to Shelley, she just spoke, in exchange for annexation. Why is that promise not being honored? We live in Rainbow Ridge. We have two exits: Ward Road and 52nd and Tabor. You cannot get out on Ward Road, especially if you're going south, and even in Russia or you can't even turn right. We're limited to one exit, and it's being compounded by all this stuff that's going in. We're already seeing an increase in traffic through our streets of people cutting through, trying to go north on Ward that are going out to all the development. Arvada built out in Indiana without any planning to handle that traffic. We have narrow streets. We have no sidewalks. People walk their kids. They walk their bikes. They walk their pets. They ride their bikes. There's been plenty of time to find more and better solutions. Yes, 52nd needs to be improved, but Wheat Ridge and Arvada has created this mess, and you're doing it at the expense of existing residents. Most of us are retired or older, and our dreams of having our residences paid off and enjoying them is being compromised by this TOD. Please, Jeffco had the common sense last week to deny another 100 units on 52nd and Ward because of the traffic nightmare. Please do the right thing, find a better solution. I would suggest, even though it's going to be a lot harder, working with CDOT to get a light at 50th and Ward so people can turn left there and direct that traffic down Ridge Road. That's where it should go, not down 52nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Larry Hayden. That is all the speakers that I have signed up. If you would like to speak, please come forward now. Yes, sir. Please come forward.
I live at 5203 Union Court, Unit 6.
Would you spell your last name, please?
R-A-I-L-T-O-N.
And your address was 5203?
Union Court.
Union Court. Thank you very much, sir. Please proceed.
Okay, real short, just the fact is, is that I personally measured, I keep hearing that 50th is too close to the railroad tracks for a stoplight. It's two football fields, 630 feet. What's the problem here? I don't think we're doing a thorough enough impact study so the state will listen to us. And same thing with Ward. We've got to have a designated turn signal to the south. It's a must, and we need to get what the state needs in order to put in writing what they will and won't do, because all I hear is hearsay. And that should be first before any of this goes on, or even start any of these developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
My name is April Mossar, M-O-S-S-E-R, and I live at 3585 Owens, so I'm not directly impacted by what's happening. I'm a longtime resident since 1986, and the reason I chose Wheat Ridge was because I thought they were, that we were very conservative in our development and very careful in how we developed, and many times resistant to maybe a good idea that didn't exactly fit. This concerns me because I think it's a trend, and I think we live in a very rich state. We're enjoying great economy, and Wheat Ridge is enjoying that also, but I think we need to be extremely careful on how we develop and not ruin neighborhoods that are beautiful, serene, well-developed, not struggling. We've already had construction in some other areas of the city that I think, one example is at 38th and Kipling, very congested. The Morning Star Retirement Home is a difficult area, just watching the residents trying to find a way to walk around during the day outside, the parking for the employees that work there. So, I just think we need to be really careful and continue, I think we should be developing absolutely, but continue in a conservative way to preserve what it is Wheat Ridge is known for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak on any item that is on the I don't see any other speakers, so we will move to our items on the agenda. Our first item on the agenda is the Ward Road Station, street improvement. And Mr. Scott Brink is here, or?
I'm presenting a presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Wesberg, please continue.
Thank you. So, you've seen this graphic before, and maybe we could kill the lights that are over the screen. That would help us. This is just our sort of potential, possible 2E projects that we showed you previously. The stuff in red is potential street projects. The stuff that's in green is more park-like kind of projects. And so, we talked about the ones that we have staff identified as priorities for this first round of design that we're getting done is 52nd Avenue east of Ward Road, Tabor Street between Ridge Ward and Ward Road, and then this portion of Ridge Road. And so, those are the three projects that our consultant has started designing. We included in your packets some street plans that are very, very conceptual in nature. It's their first draft. It's not even the official submittal to us yet for us to review. So, staff has not reviewed those. We just wanted to include something in your packets to give you an idea of what was, the direction we're headed in. And so, tonight in particular, we wanted to talk about this east section of 52nd east of Tabor Street, and also this portion of Ridge Road that's east of Tabor Street. And then, something has come up as staff has been sort of discussing things. This is actually Ken's idea, since Ken's not here tonight, we'll give credit to Ken for this idea, was to explore trying to close a gap in our sidewalk facilities and the multimodal facilities we have on the east side that are just west of Parfitt Street. Those are the three things we're primarily going to talk about tonight. So, the 52nd Avenue east of Tabor, and just to sort of orient things, this is 52nd Avenue. This is Tabor Street. The Hans Ranch development is down here. This area in green is the city of Arvada, so this is where Haskins Station is proposed. This is the existing Rainbow Ridge community. These are the two properties that were annexed into Wheat Ridge. This is the little piece of ground here that was vacated as right-of-way back in the late 90s. This piece of right-of-way is only 35 feet wide. The narrowest street section we can fit through there and sort of meet fire department and sidewalk requirements and stuff is about 40 feet wide, so we would need about five feet of additional right-of-way. We looked at the way things are done. This yard, which I think might be the Bergs, if I'm right, is very nicely landscaped and stuff, and this is their front door, right there. These two houses have driveways that come off of garages. In this house in particular, the garage is maybe 18 or 20 feet away from the right-of-way line. And so, we're hesitant to widen this road on the south side because I don't want to keep these people from using the driveway in front of their garage. And so, we've looked at doing and trying to use the narrowest section possible would be to acquire the right-of-way we need just on the north side, just because this is the side of a house, this is the front of a house, but it's set back quite a ways farther, and then this house is set back a little bit farther also. And all of their driveway access and stuff is here off the back. And so, that's what we've looked at as staff right now. And the section of roadway west of Tabor Street will meet our normal collector street standards of three lanes of traffic, so a center turn lane and two lanes, and then a detached sidewalk on our side. There are some right-of-way limitations on the north side, so we're going to limit that to an attached sidewalk on the north side. And then, as we get east of Tabor Street, our plan is to attach the sidewalk and go to just two lanes of traffic in order to keep this section as narrow as possible and minimize the right-of-way impacts that we need in order to connect the street through. So, the reason we're talking about doing 52nd is, as has been alluded to by the public tonight, there's a lot of stuff happening out there. This little blue thing, this light blue down here is the parking lot for the station. The station's actually on the south side of Ridge Road. And so, this is Ward Road here. This is 52nd Avenue, and this is Tabor Street. In this part, it goes up in the Rainbow Ridge neighborhood, and this is Ridge Road as it continues to the east. When this graphic is made, Ridge Road is not open yet. It now is open. And so, this has been opened up, and so has Taft Court has been opened up. The pink area, the northern part of the pink is Hans Ranch. This is what has been looked at as maybe doing apartments. This is the townhome development that Toll Brothers is looking at. This green thing here is the area that, we heard rumor that they got denied, and apparently we've confirmed that tonight. They were proposing some, the name of it was Ward Station Apartments, but I do think it was Townhomes was what was proposed there. They got denied tonight. This is Quail Ridge, which is already nearly built out, and there's a couple, there's a development here. The northern two-thirds of this area is looking to develop a mix of houses and townhomes. And then, this blue, which I added to the graphic, which is why it looks kind of ugly, is an industrial flex space that's being proposed in Arvada right now. So, there's a lot happening around this area, mostly because there's now going to be a commuter rail station at this location that you can jump on and ride to downtown and everywhere else in the metro area. So, this area's been very isolated and very quiet for a very long time, and that's changing largely due to the fact that there's going to be a commuter rail station opening up there. So, the street work network that exists today, just again to orient everyone, this green is Arvada. Our boundary's a little psychotic up here. This clear area is Wheat Ridge, and the sort of, I'm going to call it periwinkle, is Jefferson County. They've got a little pocket of stuff here, and they've got a pocket here, and then they've got the west side of Ward Road over here. The lines that are in black on here are the existing street network. The lines that are in white, as you can see, are what's been proposed by the various developments. And I say proposed, it's proposed by developments as required by the various jurisdictions. And so, those are the things that are being looked at as the street connections. Arvada has agreed to show a street connection coming to here based on our request of connecting up 52nd here to provide this collector street that runs this entire distance from Ward and, as was discussed, all the way to Kipling. And the traffic signal that's today is this, I don't know what I just did, but I think it's a bad thing. The traffic signal today, the only one that exists between Ralston Road and I-70 Frontage Road, is the one that's there at 52nd and Ward. And it's not possible for anyone in this neighborhood to get up to Ralston Road. There's a pretty good ridge that drops off, Arvada has a ridge too, that drops off, and I think the nearest street that you can get to Ralston on is all the way over here at Miller Street. I believe Miller Street, if you snake around enough, can get you up to Ralston. So, there's not a lot of opportunities for people that want to go north to get there except to come here and then turn up. They can sneak through this neighborhood, as some of the folks in Rainbow Ridge have told us at several meetings that I've been to that they're really concerned about. But to go south, you have to come to this signal to go south. The intersection at Ridge Road down here, which used to be 50th, is now Ridge Road since it's been punched through. We have always had it in our plan to try to get a signal at that location. We have met with CDOT on at least three occasions to talk about the possibility of doing that, and they haven't just said no, they've said absolutely no. It does not meet their spacing requirements from the signal at 52nd and Ward. They want quarter-mile spacing. This does not meet quarter-mile spacing. There's also a concern with how close it is to the railroad tracks. I understand, we all think it's a long way away. City staff does not disagree with you. We think it's a long enough way away that things could be timed properly to make that work, but they have said no to that. We've actually just received a permit from CDOT to, and we normally- We've actually just received a permit from CDOT to, and we normally use the word "improve intersections," but in my mind, we're unimproving this one. They have required us to put a island in Ridge Road to prohibit left-turn outs. Now that this road is being connected, we had to go back through the permitting process because the nature of the road has changed. It's no longer a dead-end street, it's now a through street. We had to go back through a permitting process with CDOT, and they're prohibiting left turns out at Ridge Road. Now, we are working on with Arvada and Jeffco potentially trying to grade-separate the railroad tracks at Ward Road with some federal grants and some different things like that. We'll be exploring that. And if that happens, then maybe at that point, they might think about trying to put a signal at Ridge. But until that gets grade-separated, I think the odds, chances of doing that are absolutely none based on our conversations with CDOT. So the next place you can go to go south on Ward is to go down to the I-70 Furnage Road, which is not all that inconvenient. If you can take, this is a private street now, but with this industrial development being proposed here, they would upgrade this to a local street. You could take Rob down the Furnage Road, you can take Tabor down the Furnage Road, but at both of those locations, there is a traffic signal there with crossing gates. And every four signal cycles, those gates are going to be down, on average, every four signal cycles, because there's going to be a train coming through there. Now, those trains clear through relatively quickly and the gates will come back up again, but it's not always going to be a way that you can go to get south, to get down to the Furnage Road, to go south on Ward Road. So we think a lot of folks are going to want to use 52nd in some form or fashion to go south on Ward Road, or to go through 52nd. There's quite a few destinations east or west of Ward. There's the Drake Middle School and other places that people might want to go by driving west on 52nd. I figured out what I was doing, I'm hitting the wrong button. Okay, so this 52nd connection that we're talking about would enable folks from Haskin Station and other points east that want to get to Ward Road and go south or continue going west to drive down 52nd to get to that signal. It'd be a very direct connection and very convenient connection for those folks to do that. Our concern is if we don't do this 52nd connection, if we don't make this connection, then all of those folks that want to go west will have to come down to Ridge Road. If they come down to Ridge Road and they want to get up to 52nd to get to the light, then they have to go through some of the local streets. Now, I've color-coded the arrows on here just to show, the collector streets are designated in yellow, and then the local streets are designated in this sort of orangey color. So if you're driving down Ridge Road and you want to get to 52nd, the first chance you've got to do that is to drive up Sims. Your second shot is to go up Swaddily, and then you could also go up Tabor or Taft. But going to Tabor and Taft, you start to run into, there's a signal here that is going to be impacted by the train crossing on occasion, and when you get to Taft, you're going to start to be impacted by the traffic that's coming in and out of the station. So we think people generally take the path of least resistance. Our concern with not connecting 52nd is that path of least resistance will be these local streets of Sims and Swaddily. So if there's a bunch of cars driving down Ridge that want to get to 52nd, we're concerned they'll take those. Now, like I said, we've heard from, to get to that signal, we've heard from the folks to the north in Arvada on Rainbow Ridge that they're worried about people cutting through their neighborhood to get to Ward Road to go north. And our concern with, if we don't have this 52nd Avenue connection, is that anybody that's driving up Tabor Street to get to 52nd might just keep on driving north onto, into the Rainbow Ridge community because sometimes it's just easier to keep driving straight than it is to take a left turn. So that's our concern with what's happening out there, is if we don't connect 52nd, everyone, because we can't get a signal at Ridge, everyone's going to want to go through these local streets to get up to 52nd and then continue west. So the discussion topic for tonight with council is, how would you like us to proceed? We've got conceptual level plans done on that connection just to see what they'd be like. But if council says we don't want to make that connection, then we won't make that connection. If council says, let's continue to pursue the connection, see where this leads us, then we can continue to pursue that. So that's the direction that we need from council tonight. And that's all I've got for now. I'd like to go ahead and talk about this, and then we'll talk about the rest of it later, if that's okay.
Thank you.
And I can go back to any of the graphics that we've pulled up. I've also got our aerials up, so.
Thank you. So if you would bring back the lights up so we can see, and I will open this up for a discussion by council. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. First, if you could go back to those slides where you show 52nd through there, I think it'd be illustrative. I can start with that one, maybe. I don't know if we really need those lights for the video lights, but that's fine. You've got, thank you, you've got a pointer there. Could you show us where the parking lot is for Ward Station?
So that's here.
Okay. So we've got a parking lot that's basically on Ridge Road, right?
Yes.
Which is a semi-arterial right now. I mean, it runs east-west and it's...
It's a collector street, and all the jurisdiction that crosses, yes.
And at some point in time, when all this was being, and we'll get to this point later, designed, we've got a parking lot exiting onto a collector street and nowhere for the people to go on the collector street. Is that correct?
Well, we also had RTD build Taft at this location to get them up to 52nd because we knew that people that are wanting to leave this station would need to possibly get to this signal. We tried to get RTD to improve 52nd to our collector street standards, and they did not, and they were able to say no to us on that, which is why this part of 52nd has been a pretty high priority for us as a city ever since this whole thing came along. And with the 2E monies available, that's why, that's one of our high priorities.
Okay. Now, why is it not possible to remove, if this signal light at 52nd is such a sticking point, why is it not possible to move that, remove that, and put the signal in at Ridge Road?
There's no street extending west off of Ward going to the west at Ridge Road, and there's, and 52nd going west off of Ward actually connects a lot. I think it goes all the way to McIntyre. And so it provides a very much a regional connection for that entire area to get to Ward Road. So I don't think CDOT's going to be very excited about it. I don't think Arvada and Jeffco will be very excited about moving that signal.
And from what I could swear, that development to the right there that's in Arvada that shows the white dotted lines...
Yeah, Haskin Station.
Haskin Stations. I believe I've seen documents that show that that's actually not going to have that configuration, but it's going to come down and connect directly into 52nd. It's going to be a long S curve. Have you seen anything of that?
This, they've changed their plans a few times as time has gone by, and this was the latest street network that we got from Arvada when this was prepared a few months ago. And so they've got, and I think they were concerned maybe with people cutting through their development, and so they've got this little break-in here to sort of think of as a horizontal speed bump to at least slow people down that might be coming through there.
I just, I'm amazed that, you know, the billions of dollars that went into getting the G-line out there and we're routing traffic through neighborhoods in order to get them away from the G-line. It just baffles me how we could proceed for years under that assumption that going through a neighborhood to get rid of our traffic is going to be a viable option. I'm sorry, it just baffles me. And then we have the issue of, are we going to condemn people's property up there when we promised them that it was theirs forever?
You know, that part of it would be just a right-of-way acquisition. We'd only condemn property if we were unwilling to come to an agreement. So the condemnation is always a last resort when we're acquiring right-of-way, so...
They say no, what happens?
Then with council's permission, we would condemn, yes.
So our word as a city isn't worth a darn if we're going to pursue this?
Well, yeah, I can't speak for what happened 20 years ago, but we didn't have a rail station in this part of the world 20 years ago.
We have paperwork, though, that says this was going to be open space and/or just a trail through there forever.
Okay.
And that's what we promised them when they signed these agreements and vacate, and we vacated that property, which by the way, shows up as right-of-way here, but it's not really, it's an easement.
I understand.
On this drawing.
I understand.
It shows up as right-of-way, but it is not.
I understand. So my only, I guess my response to that is things change over time, and again, if council tells me not to pursue this connection, I won't do the connection. I don't, I don't have any skin in this game. This is not something I'm going to, you know...
I keep hearing that people have been told that Arvada wants it when they talk to us, and that when they talk to Arvada, they say Wheat Ridge wants it. So which, which is which?
We've talked with Arvada staff, and we've come to a joint agreement with Arvada staff that we both think this connection's a good idea with the existing roadway network and with where the signals are located today.
I will let someone else speak for a minute.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to know what the proposed alternatives are if we choose not to go through with this plan.
So if we don't connect 52nd, and we're working on IGA right now with Arvada and Jeffco to cost-share the improvements to 52nd because all of the jurisdictions touch 52nd. We've talked with them on a sort of conceptual basis that if we don't connect 52nd, that they would assist in potentially cost-sharing some additional improvements to either Tabor Street or to Ridge Road so that we can provide a better route for people to do this to get up to 52nd and get over. So if this connection doesn't happen, then we may need to, we may need to get more right-of-way down here to make a wider street or improve that. And then, right now, Tabor Street, we did acquire right-of-way from the development on the west side to improve to our local street standards that have on-street parking available on both sides. If that ends up needing to be more like a collector street, we may have to revisit that whole thing. We probably can't get more right-of-way at this point because they're getting ready to start pulling building permits and building townhomes over there. But we'd have to look at what we're doing along that stretch of the road. So we'd probably have to convert Tabor Street from a local street to more like a collector street and try to get, make that, make that street work better from that standpoint. We're still going to have an awful lot of left turns up here at Tabor and Ridge for people to get over there. So we'd have to really look at what's happening at that corner.
Ms. Hoppy.
So if that's the case, if we have to get more land off of the Tabor Street to be able to make it a larger street, and then you said the traffic's going to be, you're going to have more left turns to Tabor to 52nd, but that development's not yet built, so it's something that could be planned around while the developers are working on that corner of that development?
Possibly. That development has been approved, and my understanding is we're very close to having all the agreements done, and they're ready to start pulling building permits. I think they may be in for building permits. So any redesigns on that side of the street are going to be very difficult at this point. We also have a real problem on Tabor Street at this corner. According to our right-of-way maps, we've got enough right-of-way to do things up there, but on the aerial, and I can pull that up if we want to, the house that's there actually encroaches near what we think is a right-of-way. Now, we have a firm investigating that right now to figure out if it really is a right-of-way. And so on Tabor Street, we're not able to bring the sidewalk all the way up to 52nd. We have to stop the sidewalk short, not do any on-street parking on both sides, and actually wiggle the street over a little bit to fit into what's there without hitting that house.
So, and when the conversations with CDOT about the signal at Ridge and Ward...
Yes.
And I'm assuming that conversation was about it like a standard signal, but are there any different types, any different types of signal where it could be just a left, not a left and a right, or like are there any other types of signals that they could put there that would be effective?
No, because the left-out is the movement that's the hardest to put in. Once you put a left-out in, then you pretty much need to build the full signal. And like I said, they have gotten very particular in recent years about making sure that their access code spacing of signals meets that quarter-mile spacing, and we just don't meet it. If the signal, if Ridge Road was down at the railroad tracks, we could actually meet that spacing, we probably could get a signal at that location, but that's not where Ridge Road happens to hit Ward Road.
And do they have no, do they have a process for any sort of special consideration for this type of situation to be under that quarter mile?
They don't. We've talked to their staff at pretty high levels about this, and we've been told pretty much unequivocally no. Yeah, we've tried, we've tried very hard. The spacing is a concern, but also the proximity of the tracks, that people might get trapped on the tracks is a huge concern for both the railroad and for them. If we grade-separate, then we might be able to go back to them and get something like a signal at Ridge Road, but that's about a $30 million project. So that's going to be a few years in the making.
And then just one more question to clarify. On the corner of Tabor and 52nd, and you're saying on the, would that be self...
Southeast corner.
Southeast corner.
Yeah, I can pull up...
There's a home that is potentially in the right-of-way, and so what would happen to that home? What would happen to that home if that became the path?
So if we decide to do something here, then we might, right now, we've got the road wiggling over about where it is today, and there's no parking on this side or this side, and so the road has to shift to the west a little bit, and then we're, sorry, our new GIS software is a little touchy, so I apologize if I make people sick. Again, we've got, we've got some folks that are going to confirm whether this really is a right-of-way or if our maps are in error. It could be their property. I'm really hesitant, I'm really hesitant to buy a house and tear down a house in order to punch a road through here just to build a sidewalk. So we're showing not, not building anything west of pretty much the edge of the existing pavement because I don't want to impact this resident.
So going this way, someone's home could potentially be...
Yes.
...lost.
Right.
And going the other way, then it gets close to other people's properties going through there.
Yeah, so this is, this is very much a local street that feeds two properties and connects to these, which also feeds some properties. When RTD was building this intersection down here, which you can see this is a 2016 aerial, so the intersection was under construction, we actually had them put speed bumps on these two streets in order to slow people down because we knew that with this block, people were going to be using this as a way to get through there. And that did happen, I think, I'm sorry. Our concern is, is if we don't make this connection, because we can't get a signal at Ridge, then our concern is that all these folks are going to come up here and use these streets, and probably these first two they get to, to try to turn to get onto 52nd. And we'll have a lot of people driving up those two streets. It's our concern. We could be wrong, but that's our concern.
Sorry, and one other question then about Taft Court. Is there, is there no space in Taft Court to direct the traffic to Taft Court up to 52nd?
Oh, no. People can definitely take Ridge over here and take Taft up and then turn.
So are there any solutions that could potentially say, local street only, do not use this street, like signs that tell people not to use Sims and Swaddily and...
Yeah, we can, we can put up all the signs we want, but they're as effective as people that want to read, so read the sign. So, yeah.
Ms. Davis.
So, couple of questions. One of my questions was Mr. Matthews about 50th because I thought I'd solved it by just moving the streetlight, but I can also see why the access to the west is important on 52nd and why the streetlights there. But I would kind of mirror, I guess, is there a reason why we're not trying, I mean, here we're trying to widen Tabor and maybe chop off a house, which is not ideal, or not have a sidewalk because of right-of-way. But again, I kind of lean towards where Ms. Hoppy was going with Taft. Like, why can't we kind of create that as more, and maybe even create it as a more appealing outlet? And I don't know if we could, I mean, put a stoplight there so that people would be more apt to go to Taft and turn left? You know, I don't know how busy 52nd would be, like, you know, I don't know in the world of, you know, traffic flow, will it be easy on any of those streets, Tabor, Swaddily, Sims, Taft? If I'm, if I'm going to feed through Ridge and go up those neighborhoods, you know, how easy it's going to be to make a left on 52nd anyways? I mean, is that, I mean, will I be sitting there for...
Well, I think the farther west you go, the harder it's going to be because you just have that much more traffic feeding into 52nd. So our concern is that, and again, this is just about the 52nd connection. If we decide not to do that, we can explore other options to try to make these other streets less attractive or more attractive and those kind of things. The concern is, is that you've got a, you've got a signal here that will, that will often be green for Ridge, so getting through that may not be that hard. But as soon as you get here, then you're going to start to run into traffic from the station. The folks that are coming to this station to drop people off or are parking there are probably going to take Taft in and out to get up to 52nd. So we think Taft, which is why we made RTD build Taft, we think Taft will be fairly busy with station traffic and with the traffic of the folks that are immediately going to be adjacent to it. So our concern is that people take the path of least resistance. If I'm trying to get from here over to here, I know if I go up Sims, I've only got two houses between me and wanting to turn left. Turning left at Sims is going to be really easy because there's nobody to the left of you if the connection's not there. So that's our concern. And then, or you could come up Swaddily, and now you've only got one street and a few houses that are going to be potentially driving back and forth that will make the left turn hard.
I mean, I appreciate that theory too, because living a block off of Wadsworth, you see people doing the same thing through my neighborhood. They cut through the neighborhood if Wadsworth starts slowing down, or to get over to 38th, they'll cut through my neighborhood and go up to 38th. But, so it's one of those, be careful what you wish for, because now you're funneling it. You could potentially... You, you could potentially be disturbing, you know, three streets of neighborhood.
And that's our concern. When we, when we lost the ability to put a signal at Ridge, it was always our hope in our original IGA with RTD, we had them helping to contribute to a signal at Ridge. That's how strongly we felt about getting a signal there. But, but in recent years, C.D.A.'s just told us flat out, no. And sort of told us last meeting, "Don't come back and ask us again until something dramatically changes," like grade separating the, the railroad tracks.
Mr. Matthews.
What would be the possibilities of closing 52nd Avenue east of Tabor to, to vehicles?
We could certainly look at that.
And that would relieve some pressure. I mean, I'm all, I'm not necessarily against moving everybody to Taft. I mean, we paid good money to widen that. Do we have traffic counts on what we think's going to happen there?
Well, Taft just opened, so we have nothing on Taft right now. We have some estimates of things. We've got a traffic report that, that sort of puts all this stuff together. Right now, our version shows the 52nd connection. We've got the consultant on standby that if we, if council says no tonight to connecting that, we'll redo that traffic report and see what, see what we can do to try to minimize the impact on those neighborhoods.
According to a document I have here, the existing, as of 2010, traffic volumes on 52nd Avenue over kind of midway towards Ward is 3,800 cars or, or movements.
Right, right.
What's the projected when the station opens?
I, I don't have that number off the top of my head. We've got that number available, but it's a lot more than 3,800. And it's not just the station. The station's just one piece of this puzzle. It's the station plus Haskins, plus Hans, plus Traxx, plus Toll Brothers, plus everything else that's been proposed because it's now a commuter rail station. So it's gone from being a semi-industrial area to suddenly being a major destination for a lot of folks that both want to live and commute and, and work and all of those things.
Well, that was kind of my point, is we've got a station built now, and we're trying to figure out how to get people out of the rat maze.
Well, we had that part figured out. That's why we had Taft built up to 52nd. But it's, it's all the additional development that's happening all around this that's creating the additional traffic that, that right now, we're trying to figure out the best way to deal with.
We assumed there'd be no other additional traffic.
Well, we, we've required developers as they, in, in Wheat Ridge at least, we've required developers as they develop to pay for the improvements around their properties, which is generally what's considered reasonable. To, and we didn't, until 2E passed, we didn't have money to do major improvements up in this part of the world. We've now got $12 million to do the major improvements up in this part of the world, and so that's why we're starting to explore all of these different options. So a lot of stuff has come together all at once, and that's why we're here tonight to figure out, where do we go from here?
Would that pay for a bridge?
A bridge where?
Over, over Ward?
Oh, no, the, the, the bridge is like $30 million.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Things have gone up a lot lately.
Yes, yes, they have. Because it's a situation where the, the railroad tracks, and I'll, I'll go as brief as I can on this, railroad tracks slope at 1% going up to the west, and you can only take freight trains up at 2%. So we can't just take the tracks up and over. We can take, we can get halfway for what we need separation-wise by taking the tracks up and over, but we've also got to depress the road there also. So we have to do both those things in order to make that happen.
What you're saying, it'd have to be like the underpass at Grandview.
Similar to Grandview, yeah. Yeah, they had the, they had the, the fortune of being right next to the Ridge, so they were able to just drop it down and come out. We've got to come down and come back up again. The Ridge is too far to the south for us to just come out. We've got too many access points along there to, to do that.
Mr. Westberg, what, you haven't talked about the I-70 frontage road on the, on the north side. Does that, does that provide any relief if you were to go down, go down Tabor or?
Or Robb Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we improved Tabor Street because we thought that was a great connection to get made down to the frontage road, both for pedestrians and bikes and, and people and cars. And so that's the big reason we focused on Tabor Street when we got the money from RTD to do that project. And we spent a million dollars there to make that project happen. And so that provides a great connection down there. If this industrial development at this location also happens, they're going to have to dedicate Robb Street and build Robb Street. It's our pond on the east side, but they'll have to build Robb Street down to where Robb Street ends today. So both of those will definitely give, for people wanting to go southwest, will definitely give a place for them to get down the frontage road and then go over to Ward to go south. So that definitely does work that way. My concern is that because you've got to cross the tracks, and every seven and a half minutes or so, there's going to be trains zipping across there, that, that's going to not always be the most attractive route. They may, these folks may come down to here, see that the trains are crossing and the things block, and just take off and head this way, and then figure out a way to get up here. So it's, it's, and again, if this connection's not made, they can't, they can't take Ridge all the way to Ward and then turn right onto Ward. So that is a possibility for people wanting to go north. So they can go south across here, it's just when the trains are there, you can't cross that. That's not just waiting for the signal to change, it's an additional delay for them.
And then, is there a signal at I, at the frontage road and Ward Road? That, that's a full?
There is, there's a full signal there. There's not a signal at the frontage road in either Robb or Tabor, but presumably that'd be a right turn, so it should be fairly easy to make. So, so yes, those are our two options. If you want to go south, it's either come to 52nd or go down the frontage road.
And presumably, this is, this is traffic that, that may be accessing I-70?
Yes.
Is there, uh, what are the opportunities to go from this neighborhood east in order to get to I-70?
So east, you can still go down Tabor or Robb and get down the frontage road and head east. You can take Ridge and go east all the way to Independence, if you like. It doesn't connect with Kipling. Ridge does not connect with Kipling. So you've got to get off at Miller Street or something like that and, and snake your way north or south to get to Kipling if you want to go to I-70 going that way. Given the way the I-70-Kipling interchange is, I don't think a lot of people are going to use that as a way to get onto I-70.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Marius. Back to a question that Mr. Matthews had relating to Mrs. Byer's property. You indicated that we would make an offer to purchase that right-of-way, not necessarily negate or avoid an existing warranty deed that we have with the property owner.
You know, I should probably have Mr. Dahl talk about this because it's, it's my understanding that we still own the ground, that there's an easement that allows them to, to do that. So it's actually our ground still, that 30-foot wide strip. But Mr. Dahl has more information on that part of it and whatever legalities would be necessary to get rid of the open space forever clause that's in the, that's in those original documents.
Mr. Dahl, would you like to enlighten us with that?
Sure. The, the 1998 annexation agreement required that the city vacate the street right-of-way in that location. Once vacated, the adjoining property owner on the north, the Byers, uh, receive title. Part of that annexation agreement then required the Byers to reconvey that 30-foot strip to the city, which was done. That reconveyance was, as was described of Gauthier, for open space purposes, and the city conveyed then an easement back to the Byers to continue to store their vehicles and equipment and materials for their landscape business on that parcel so long as that business needed it, was kind of the language of the easement. So the city is entitled to that 30-foot strip, not the, the Byers. The city actually owns the underlying property, and it's burdened with two things, you know, the easement to the Byers to store landscape materials, vehicles, and the statement and the special warranty deed back to the city from the Byers that'd be held by the city for open space purposes. So the city would need, as a part of condemnation action, to condemn out that, not only the, assuming you, you were not able to have an arms-length, you know, mutual agreement, which you must always start with before you condemn, the city would then need to have condemnation action to clear both the easement and the open space restriction. And on that point, it's, it comes up occasionally that a condemning authority has to condemn one public property that's held for one public purpose so as to use it for another. And courts typically allow that where the condemning authority is condemning for a reasonable and understandable public purpose, which a street right-of-way is. So while it will make no question the condemnation action a little more complicated, it's something the city can do. What Mark said was probably the most, the, the key thing, which is, the policy question for the council is, do we connect this or not? And if you choose not to connect it, then we don't have these complications. If you choose to connect it, then there's no question, and I admit that, that it will be more complicated to acquire, but I believe the city will be able to. The details of that are, you know, we'll, we'll have to work out, and at some point, I'd be happy to advise the council on executive session what the kind of legal theories would be. Obviously, I wouldn't want to do that in a public meeting because, because I can't. But Mark is right in kind of wanting the policy direction. It's not impossible to connect it legally if we need to. More complicated than usual, but not, but, but doable.
Do we have further questions for Mr. Dahl at this time?
No, Mr. Dahl, no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dahl. Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Going back to the 52nd and Tabor intersection and the discussion about blocking off 52nd at that intersection going east so that Swadley and Sims would be sort of off on their own in a U-shaped cul-de-sac of sorts, the downside of closing off 52nd at Tabor would be that it would no longer connect to the Haskins' station area. Is that correct? Or is that alternative ever been fleshed out as far as closing off 52nd at Tabor?
You know, we, we've not talked about, and you're talking about closing, you know, somewhere in here. We've not talked about that option. Certainly, I think Fire would be okay with that because they could still, you know, they've still got a loop, they've got two ways in and out of the neighborhood. It's not a super-long cul-de-sac or something. Again, the concern might be that, that we can put up signs that says, "Not a Through Street" and those kind of things, but people will still, the first time, will turn their thing and then get through, and they won't be able to, they'll have to circle back around. So that'll happen a few times with folks. But, you know, that certainly is one option. We'd have to really look at what we do to Tabor Street or, or what we can do to Taft Street, and Taft is brand-new built, so I don't know if we'd do much to Taft. But we could certainly look at that as an option of closing this at this location.
And as far as the connection of 52nd through to Haskins, you're saying that it's a mutual desire on both the city and the city of Arvada to, to make that connection? Or what's the, what's the impetus for making that connection?
Um, the impetus is that we don't have a signal at Ridge Road, which is what we'd hoped to get, and so we're trying to give folks the most direct route to get over to Ward from the Haskins Station property, being concerned that they might use these streets as cut-throughs. Now, keep in mind, you know, Tabor Street's also a residential street. We do have residents that live along here, so it's going to be a little difficult to, to deal with that situation. And, you know, part of it too is just, it kind of goes back to the, just the premise of the more connections you can have, the more options you give people, the more you can spread traffic out. We don't end up loading everything onto one street. You know, it's, it's a better, it's a better thing to spread traffic out and distribute it, you know, on different routes to get to, to get to other destinations. So.
Ms. Hoppe.
Um, Mark, on, on Ward Road, as you go up and into the green, you have that intersection right there?
This one?
Yeah. Is there a light there?
There's not a light there.
Um, and that, that street that kind of snakes through there, that kind of looks like you could then make a left, go up a little bit, go back up?
This little thing here?
Yep, go over.
That, that dead end's pretty much right there.
No, not that one. The one that looks like you could really connect it into that, Arvada Street right there.
This one?
One down and to the right?
This one.
Over?
Oh, to the right.
Yeah, that one.
These are both dead ends. These are both cul-de-sac streets.
Okay.
Is that the right ones?
Those, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah, those are both cul-de-sac streets. There's actually houses built around the ends of these. Yeah.
Mr. Pond.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out and commenting and listening. I know that this is a hard subject, and you guys have been patient with us, and I appreciate that, and thanks for staff for the, for the work on this. I, you know, if the question is whether to push through or not, one answer is not now, based, at least based on what I've, what I've heard. There's a lot of speculation, probably very intelligent and educated speculation as to flow of traffic, future flow of traffic, congestion, routes, options, and, and all of those things. But they are somewhat speculative in, in, in nature in terms of how this is going to build, get built out and what traffic patterns actually are going to start to evolve and what problems may, may or may not result from that. And unless I'm missing something, one option is to say, "Not now," and to continue our work on the 52nd, you know, the, the, the other kind of priorities other than that, that little piece, and to allow development to proceed, and I suppose the Arvada development will have to figure, figure that out, and, and our developers will, will have to, to, to figure that out. And, and as things get built out, we'll see those flows and those, and, and the actual issues or non-issues actually develop. And at that point, I think you could, you could start to look at any number of the options that have been discussed tonight and/or presented, which is to say, I'm not sure I would even try to dead-end 52nd or widen Tabor or, or any of those things until we actually saw how it was working and, and/or if it was failing. Because all of those things, again, unless I'm wrong, would still, would still be options in, in the future, and in fact, they'd be options with more information, perhaps actual information of, of things, things going on. So I guess I just want to put that out there as a, as a thought, you know, that, that one answer could be not now, and that we go ahead and do the work we think we need to do on 52nd, and we allow things to build out, and then if Swadley and Sims get swamped, you know, then obviously, we're going to be sitting in here and discussing what options at that point we have to manage, to manage that, up to and including, perhaps, you know, a different conversation about punching 52nd through because, because maybe it looks more obvious at that point. But, you know, I guess I just want to put that out there as, as, as a thought, and see what, see what people think.
Ms. Hoppe.
Uh, yeah, I actually appreciate Mr. Pond putting that out there because that, it's kind of where I was thinking was, I, I'm not in a place to say yes or no on this. I think that at, in the future, that we will have kind of more information and more options, and so I'm, I'm kind of along in the same kind of lines of thinking of the, you know, not right now. And perhaps, as something else will present itself a little further north on that, on that development.
Mr. Westberg, on, on, on Taft Street, has Taft Street been, been finally constructed, or do we have options on Taft?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's done. It's been done, it was finished a couple of years ago, and we've just been waiting for all the stuff to happen where RTD could open up, and they just opened it up a few weeks ago. So, Taft is done. Now, we could certainly do things, you know, as we're building 52nd past Taft, we can certainly do things to try to make that, that route more attractive. We can certainly wait to do something. My only concern with waiting is we sort of have the money now, we've got to spend it relatively quickly, but, but waiting is always an option to see how things progress. You know, potentially closing 52nd east of Tabor is another option that we could explore. You know, I just, all those things are options. We just, if, if, if council wants us to pursue those other options, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, I mean, Mr. Fitzgerald, pardon me.
I realize how this question sounds, and I'm sorry for sounding so crass. You've talked about preventing, um, traffic backup and, on Haskins. But I'm wondering, I'm, I'm asking myself the question, what is our advantage to cooperate with Arvada?
Well, again, from staff's point, as we've talked about tonight, our concern was that if we don't connect 52nd, we potentially, all of that traffic goes through our local streets in the neighborhoods there, south of 52nd. So that was the reason we pursued this. We definitely, no doubt in my mind, we impact the folks that live on 52nd, but there's always trade-offs in, in what we do, and it was a trade-off of, of if we make this 52nd connection, it's a really direct route over to where the signal is on Ward, and it's a really direct route over to where the signal is on Ward, and so we think a lot of people will take that, and they won't impact the neighborhoods on either side of 52nd. We definitely impact the houses on either side of 52nd, no doubt about that, but we don't impact the neighborhoods on either side as much if we've got that direct connection. That's why we've pursued this when we lost the signal at Ridge. The chance for a signal at Ridge, we didn't ever have a signal at Ridge. We lost the chance for a signal at Ridge, and that's why we've looked at this as an option.
Mr. Matthews?
There's a lot of overhead utilities and large power lines in some of those areas. Are those gonna be in conflict with widening 52nd?
Yes, those are all on the north side, and so we'd have to, Jeff Coen of Arvada, we need to ask Excel to relocate those. If they relocate them above ground, then that's at Excel's cost. If those two jurisdictions choose to get those undergrounded, they could use their 1% funds like we often do to do that. They've not indicated they'll do that, so our plan is to leave a two-foot space behind the sidewalk for Excel to put their poles and stuff in. So we have looked at that, yes.
Okay, as I look at this, and I'm, I mean, I'm kind of agreeing with the, let's hold our water for a little while and see what happens, because it looks to me like Tabor is, I mean, we spent money improving Tabor already, and it looks to me like it's meant to be kind of a collector.
It is. Tabor, south of Ridge, is a collector.
And so, I mean, if we're not gonna try and put traffic on it, I'm not sure to what end that helps us. I think Arvada, what we're doing is living with Arvada's problem again, just like we are on Wadsworth and everywhere else, where they're building just as many things as they can and then dumping their traffic out on everybody else. I don't see, I mean, we can do things to prevent traffic from going to those neighborhoods, I'm sure, and a lot of that would, there are possibilities there to help relieve that kind of congestion until Arvada comes up with a solution to what kind of traffic load they're gonna put on the streets to us. It's about time they started thinking about that when they do their development. So I'm happy with people here saying, "Let's do a wait and see what happens." I am in favor of pursuing what happens both with Tabor, south and Taft to the north. Do, I just, out of curiosity, do we know what the existing capacity of the new parking lot is for the station?
There's 290 spaces, as I remember.
Is that it?
About 200, yeah. We're really concerned about that, too.
I mean...
Yeah. We've had a huge concern about that for a very long time.
We spent a billion dollars for 290 cars?
Yeah, we've had a concern about that.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had a pretty good discussion. Do we, has a consensus emerged among council? Mr. Urban?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you wouldn't mind, I could offer some historic perspective on this. I was on the city council when we vacated the end of 52nd, and it was for the exact reasons that you're talking about. Arvada historically has had a very bad habit of building all kinds of developments first, and then, "Oh, what are we gonna do about the roads and the infrastructure?" They did it way out northwest, and in this area, just east of here, they build a bunch of stuff, and all the traffic dumps down on Miller, and it goes down through Wheat Ridge. This is the same thing, and the purpose of cutting off that end of 52nd was to kind of force Arvada to take care of their own traffic. Now, you see, they've, Christie, you mentioned those two little roads that come out, and they're cul-de-sacks. Was it you who had asked about those two roads? Denise? Okay. And so that's great. Those people that live on those streets have these nice little cul-de-sack streets that nobody can get through, and the folks on Tabor, Swadley, and Sims, they have to bear the brunt of all of this new, I mean, I don't know how many units they have planned there, how many residential units, but back, I think, when I was on council, they were talking about 1,400 houses, and maybe it's less or more than that, I don't know, but the very purpose was to protect that neighborhood, and if, and you fill them up with speed bumps or block them off at the south end, there's things that we can do to protect Sims, Swadley, and Tabor. And if Ridge Road's jammed or Taft and Tabor get jammed, then it gets jammed, but at least preserve that residential neighborhood that's been there for a long, long time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it make a consensus that we not pursue a connection for 52nd Avenue at this time?
Okay, there's consensus on that?
Can I modify that with the permission of the original maker?
Oh, you can make a new one.
It's in conflict with yours, so... That we complete all of the proposed items on 52nd, except not connecting it beyond Sims.
Oh, yeah, I think the only consensus was that we not make a connection.
Not make the connection, but the rest of the work could move forward?
Okay.
Okay. Does that give you the direction you need to move forward with the work on 52nd without punching through to the east?
So what we've talked about on staff is if we don't make that connection, we wouldn't improve 52nd east of Tabor to make that road less attractive to folks that might want to drive that. So we'd build all the collector street stuff west of Tabor, like what we planned, three-lane sidewalks, everything, but we'd stop, we wouldn't do anything east of Tabor, is what we've sort of talked about as staff is doing. So I just want to clarify where we want to stop building, and it sounded like we were gonna build a Sims, but I'd be inclined not to build a Sims.
Is that the consensus of the council? That's the consensus of the council?
Especially if we're gonna maybe cut Tabor off, or cut 52nd off one day, so...
And I think, you know, would it also be the consensus of the council to continue to look at other options in this neighborhood in order to mitigate the traffic that goes through the neighborhood streets and see if we can't find some other solutions?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. That would be our next step, is look at what our other options are.
Okay.
One of which we might talk about tonight in the next topic.
Ms. Dozeman?
So I don't mind exploring other options. I think that that would be wise to look forward, but my biggest concern with this specific plan and in general is that we don't have a good estimate of traffic counts. None of the build-out has been completed, and so we don't have adequate information about, you know, the density and how much traffic is going to increase, and so I really like that we are doing the wait-and-see, and, I mean, I don't know that I want to put more work on you at this moment if we're gonna wait and see, you know, down the road, but...
I think what we'll need to do as staff is we're gonna, we'll get our consultants. It's mostly the consultants working, so it's just money at this point. It's not my time necessarily. So we're working on the traffic, which is a big deal, but we're working on the traffic site right now. It's almost finalized for having the connection made, so we can shift gears a little bit. We'll keep that data. We can shift gears a little bit and say, "Okay, if the connection's not made, what are the impacts?" And what we can do to mitigate those, that's our next step after tonight's meeting, would be to get a scope of work and a fee from them to do that work, because we do need to figure that out. Because, again, Arvada at least has indicated that if the 52nd connection's not made, they get the fact they're impacting us. They really do, at least at the staff level, that if we need to do something different on Ridge between Tabor Street and our east boundary, then maybe they're gonna help us pay for part of that, since they're not paying for that part of 52nd. So I do think that we'll continue to do this analysis. We'll shift our analysis a little bit and look at if the connection's not made, what do we have then? And we can come back to, we're gonna be before you guys several times on this project in the next several months, so we can definitely report back on those items.
Okay. Thank you. So that will conclude the question that you had, the action request that you had on that. Would you please move to your next item?
Part two.
Continue.
So part two is to talk about Ridge Road multimodal stuff. This is something that's just, again, sort of come up in conversations with staff. So this graphic, Ward Road's over here on the west. Ridge Road runs along here and runs all the way to Independence, all the way over here. This is Kipling. This is Miller. This is Parfit at this location, and then this, again, is sort of where Haskins Station is. This is our new pond that we talked about just a few weeks ago. This is where the industrial sort of flex space is being proposed. So in the last few years, what you see in this sort of very, very dark blue color is all of the multimodal stuff that's been built on Ridge by various folks. RTD built all the stuff from Ward all the way up to Tabor Street. This was built by the Quail Ridge Development, which is right in here. This was built a long time ago by Skyline Estates when they were done. Sky Ridge, Skyline, Skyline. And then Arvada is a part of their work around the Arvada Ridge Station, which is located right here, has added multimodal, has added sidewalk and stuff to this part of Ridge. So we have a few gaps left. When Haskins builds, if Haskins builds, they would be closing this gap. They'd be building all of this on the north side of Ridge. And then, as we've talked about, we're planning on building this part of Ridge, so it leaves two gaps for us. There's a gap over here, which is, this is state-owned property. It's a state facility they've got, and there's a major drainage channel on the north side of Ridge Road there. It's the Ridge Home Tributary. All of Skyline Estates drains at this point and then comes and drains down Miller Street. So they don't send us traffic. They send us their water, too. And so there's this one little gap that's left right here. We just wanted to have a conversation with council tonight, since we have this 2E project going on at the station, and we've got design consultants and right-of-way consultants that we're in the process of hiring onboard, we wanted to talk with council about maybe closing this little gap so that we can provide multimodal access from Miller Street all the way to Ward on this, along Ridge Road. So I've got a little graphic here, oh, first, we're gonna talk about Ridge Road east of Tabor. So this is Tabor Street. This is the intersection that, I don't know where my mouse is. This is the intersection RTD built as a part of their work. Tabor used to just come down and do that weird little wiggle thing, but since Ridge punched through, they relocated Tabor over here. And then this is where Ridge is. This is a very narrow right-of-way, which is partly encumbered by RTD's stuff that they've got down here. And so in order to add curb gutter and sidewalk on the north side, we need about 12 to 15 right-of-way, feet of right-of-way from these folks. This is the side yard for a duplex. This is the side yard for the duplex. This is someone's garage, which we're getting very close to getting to the point they couldn't park their cars if we go any farther. And this is another driveway here, and they've got sort of a weird driveway. They've got a lot of driveways on those duplex. We're not sure what happened there. And so what we need to do is we need to acquire about 12 to 15 feet of right-of-way. We think, we don't know for sure, we're still working on that design, to potentially do that. So we just wanted to sort of show that to council tonight. Now, with not connecting 52nd through, and as we go through this traffic analysis on this, this assumes a two-lane section for this part of Ridge. It's west of Tabor, it's all three lanes. East of our boundary line, it's all gonna be three lanes. And so there's one section here, we're gonna bring it down to two lanes and not have a center-turn lane, because if we add that center-turn lane, then we add another 11 feet, and now we're starting to get very close to some houses. This guy can't use his garage anymore and that kind of thing. So again, we're doing a minimized section through here. Now, if we don't connect 52nd through, which we're not gonna do, we may need to relook at what the traffic's doing down here, potentially look at adding that third lane and seeing what those impacts are. So I just wanted to let council know that that'll be something we'll be looking at as we proceed with that. There's always a ripple effect whenever we do things. So at that other location, this is the little gap. So this is the Quail Ridge. They had not started construction yet, but this is almost all built out, and they put enough asphalt down for the three lanes, for bike lanes, and then for a detached sidewalk. What's east of there that Skyline Estates did is they built the sidewalk already, so we have this little gap here where you can see this red line is our right-of-way, where the right-of-way jogs down and then jogs back up again. If we just connect the dots, then that's what we end up with, and we get very, very close to the corner of this house. So we've not done any investigation beyond me drawing the little yellow parallelogram on this drawing. So what we'd like to know, council, do you want us to use some of the 2E money that's designated for the Ward Station to explore closing this connection, doing the design, acquiring the right-of-way, and doing that construction? Is that something you're interested in having us do? I mean, we can certainly, if you say, "Yeah, let's look at it tonight," we're not gonna charge full steam ahead. We'll come back and let you know what we think it'll cost and what our design will be, and all those things as we proceed. We just want to know if this is something that you think is a worthy project, that we should include as one of our priority projects, or at least explore this as including as a priority project as we move forward with this. So that's our second question for the evening on Ridge Road stuff.
We'll start with Mr. Pond.
Thank you. My answer is I think we should explore it. I see, obviously, a lot of difficulty with it, but I think exploring it is actually very important to continue our efforts towards creating full multimodal connectivity in this area, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't at least study it hard enough to understand how it could be accomplished or why it couldn't, and be able to answer that question in the future, because I think in future build-out, it would look very odd that we were not able to provide pedestrian or, you know, bike access in these other directions, and I think that, and I think we would have to at that point be able to demonstrate the due diligence and the reasoning as to why we did or didn't do it. So I would say that. And I feel like we may have just saved some money on the previous issue, so, you know, let's do it.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a relates to the ballot question 2E, when they talk about the Gold Line Station area, how far does that extend out? Because you could flagpole this all the way to Westminster if you wanted to. I just, I don't, I see this as being pretty far removed from the actual Ward Road Station, and so I don't know that the bond council would agree that we could use this money in this manner. I understand it's for pedestrian amenities and whatnot, but I just, I feel like this particular one is a little bit far removed. I'm not so much certain about the Swadley and the Sims property, but as it relates to this one, I would have a question as to whether or not we're legally...
That'll be our first step we can ask when Patrick gets back. We can have him check into that and see if he thinks this was all done after Patrick left. We sort of had this thought, and as we were writing the council memos. He reviewed the memo before it came to you, of course, but we've not really talked to him at length about that question, so we can certainly ask that question. That can be step one in our exploration.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Ms. Hoppe?
I do think it's extremely important for us to see how we can connect the multimodal into our site, because this is part of our future, and what we're looking at is, can you walk, bike, roll there and pick up the train? And so I think it's important for us to make sure that we know if we can do that and what are our hurdles in the future, if it's not a "right now," so I support further researching that.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Did you have something? Okay. Is there other discussion on this? Is it the sense of the council and a consensus that we study this issue? There's your answer. We'll study this issue and start with...
We'll go ask the first question about whether this can be included or not. I think it's a great question.
Okay, thank you.
So I was, as a continuation of this item, I was just gonna talk about some schedule things really quickly with council, just to give you an update, because we've not been before you in a few months on this. We hope to come back to you in December to award the right-of-way consultant contract for the right-of-way acquisition we need. Since we're not extending 52nd, we would just need right-of-way on Ridge Road there, east of Tabor Street, so it's just five properties or six properties there, so it's, it should be a, we'll have to look at their scope of work and trim that back a little bit. We'll be working with Jeff Coen of Arvada to try to finalize our IGA. We're still, we've heard a little bit back from Jeff Co, but we haven't heard back from Jeff Co Legal yet, so it's always important to hear back from Jeff Co Legal. We're gonna do some public outreach in January through February. Towards the end of January, we'll have our small group meetings, our block-by-block meetings with folks that are directly adjacent to the corridor. It'll be an invitation-only thing. Those who be there on 52nd east of Tabor may not be invited anymore, because we probably won't have that meeting. But we'll certainly talk with the folks that live on Tabor Street. We want to talk to the folks that live on Ridge east of Tabor, and then talk with the folks that live on 52nd between Ward and Tabor, just to find out what their concerns might be and have some direct communication. We've been really successful in getting information from our residents and businesses when we did those outreach meetings. And then in early February, we plan on having a public meeting, just sort of our standard thing we do on all of our Public Works projects, where you invite everyone within 300 feet, and anybody else can show up that gets wind of it, to see where we are so far. By that point, we'd have 60% drawings done, so we should be in pretty good shape for showing the public, this is what we think things are gonna look like out there. In February, we plan on coming back to council to designate our street wits, since we're changing street wits out there on the three streets, we'd have to come back to council and do a street wit designation. We're working on our construction plans now through about April timeframe, and then in early January and February, we'd be working on right-of-way deeds and sort of pre-acquisition items, valuations and things like that. And then March through May, we'd be working on actually doing those right-of-way acquisitions, and if we can do the right-of-way acquisitions quicker, then we'll certainly try to. We certainly want to be fair, but that's our critical path right now. And with that, we would be doing bidding and award in June and July, and then we start construction in August. I hate starting projects in August. So if we can trim a month or two out of our right-of-way process, if everyone thinks this is a great idea, and they all accept our first offer, we'll charge full steam ahead and get started early. That's never happened for me before on a project, but you never know. Things sometimes work out. So that's really where we are on this one.
Mr. Matthews?
And I know this hasn't always happened in the past, but when you send out these notices, I'm sure that the city council people whose district that's in will get notice to of these meetings.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Westberg. I think, unless we have something else, we'll conclude item number one. I'd like to thank all the citizens that came and spoke on this. Very important that you come and come and talk and tell us what you think. We appreciate it.[1789.32] Thank you very much.
You okay? All right.
Yeah. Wait and see is not a bad way to go.
No, about the development. That development wasn't good.
We'll get our, we'll get with Lauren in the morning and we'll talk about some scopes of work from.
Right, but because of the development. So consider how aggressively you're developing because of the traffic. And they also imply keep your hands in the sand and do nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, why we can't give a signal. Yeah. It wasn't just, it was hell. I didn't want to use a poor little.
Are you all ready to proceed to item number two?
Item number two.
Okay. If I may have order in the chamber, we're going to move to item number two. This is the Sloans Lake FEMA mapping update. Mr. Westburg.
So just want to give you a little bit of history. Our Sloans Lake flood mapping that we've got currently was done back in 1977. So a long time ago. I'm a little disturbed by how long ago '77 was now. And the reason we updated it is because a lot of stuff has happened since 1977. We've got updated better topography, we've got updated calculations. Every way that we calculate stuff has changed. I think in '77, we were probably still using cards, punch cards to do calculations. There's been a fair amount of development, redevelopment, not necessarily in Wheat Ridge, but in the other jurisdictions. And a lot of the previous master plan improvements to Urban Drainage and the other jurisdictions' credits and ours have all been done. So there was a need to update the, there I did that again. There was a need to update that. And so our project sponsors, Urban Drainage, led the charge as they always do, and their ballot initiative passed, so they've got more money to spend on things, so I'm really happy about that. We hope to come see them about a floodplain project or two in the future. The cities of Wheat Ridge, Lakewood and Edgewater, and then the city and county of Denver. Denver in particular, the maps changed a lot in their jurisdiction. They changed some in ours. So we started this project back in January of 2016 is when we came to council and got the IGA approved, and they kicked off pretty quickly after that. They updated the hydrology and they actually incorporated a region-wide update on hydrology that Urban Drainage has been working on for a few years. They did the hydraulics, which mostly was get all the previous master plan improvements. We had no storm sewer virtually anywhere in 1977 when this all started. And there's quite a bit of storm sewer, both in Wheat Ridge and in the other jurisdictions that wasn't there before. So it really changed the way things work out there, especially for the minor storm events. And then we ended up with all of that information, and we updated the mapping. And the FAD, what FAD stands for is Flood Hazard Area Indolation, which is why we all say FAD, because the other thing's kind of a tongue twister. They also evaluated additional improvements that could be done. And so there's a couple of existing areas that pond water, like at the high school down in Edgewater, that they're going to formalize that and actually make it a regional detention pond in Edgewater. They've got a couple of other things like that. There were no new projects in Wheat Ridge. Our storm sewer that we sort of need is already built. We did look at one pond that we could maybe put in at Teller Street, just east of City Hall, but it didn't help enough downstream to sort of pass muster with Urban Drainage's project selection criteria. So we're not looking at that now. So we've got three options available, and what we do with this, now we've got this updated mapping, what do we do with it? That's always the question when you get new stuff. In the council memo, I alluded to the fact that when I first started here, I looked at the mapping and looked at whether, do we need to adopt this or somehow regulate or do something? My concern at that time was this information's almost 35 years old and is probably not accurate. And turns out, it wasn't very accurate. So that's why we did nothing up until now. But now that we have our new maps, we just need to talk about the options we have available to us. And they've all got pros and cons. So the one thing is just no action, just continue our current practice. The FADs show the flood's headers areas, they're not on the FEMA maps, but they're on the FADs, and we don't regulate. We only regulate things based on the FEMA maps, the FAMs. So we wouldn't regulate anything in the southeast part of town that's in these floodplains. And we'll show a map in a minute that shows where those floodplains are. So that's option one, so that's the no-action option. Option two is we can adopt the FAD as a PIA. That's a Denver term. I may come up with a different name for it, because PIA just doesn't roll off the tongue. Or maybe it's PIA, I don't know. But Denver regulates these potential inundation areas. They've got a lot of these in their town that they've identified as areas that might flood that are upstream of where FEMA does their stuff. So FEMA has a cutoff, and I think it's where you have one square mile of tributary area. Anything above that, they stop mapping at that point, because things are just getting small enough, it's not worth the effort to map, in FEMA's mind. We have often in this part of the world done much more mapping than that with these FADs that Urban Drainage does. They sort of take them to the very end. So they regulate those as a potential inundation area. They regulate them a little bit differently than they do the regular floodplains. Our proposal with this would be to basically regulate those areas just like we regulate floodplains from a city standpoint. So they'd be subject to our rules and regs, and we'll talk about what those impacts are. They wouldn't be subject to the federal regs or the state regs, just our regs only. And then the other would be to include all of these flood hazard areas that are shown in the FAD in the actual FAM map. So Denver's doing a bunch of remapping, those things are already in the FAM, and so they're getting them changed. Edgewater is adding some additional areas into the FAM and that kind of thing. And they called me like three weeks ago and said, hey, we need a decision right now. And I said, well, I can't get to council till the 19th, so let me do that. And they said, okay, we'll wait till then. So when I leave here, I'm going to send Urban Drainage an email and tell us what our decision is. Under that situation, everything would apply. All the state, federal and city regs would apply to those areas. We'd regulate those just like we do the floodplains along Clear Creek and Lena Gulch. So I want to take two seconds just to say, why do we have floodplains? It's just not because we like to regulate things. The primary goal of a floodplain is to communicate risk. Let people know that they're in a flood hazard area. That's our primary goal of a floodplain. If you've got a 30-year mortgage and you stay there all 30 years and you're in the 100-year floodplain, there's a 26% chance in that 30 years you're going to get wet. It's a much greater risk than fire. You're actually nine times more likely to get wet than you are to burn, based on statistics of what happens around the country. The other thing that we do with floodplains is we alert property owners the need to go get flood insurance. If a tree falls on your house and knocks a hole in the roof and your house gets wet, your insurance policy will most likely cover that. If the waters rise around your house and flood in, your insurance policy most likely will not cover that. Normal homeowner insurance policies do not cover flooding from stuff coming in. They cover broken pipes and trees in the roof, but not flooding coming through windows and those kind of things. So the other thing we do is we want to let people know to get flood insurance, that they're protected if they get wet at some point. So this was our little comparison table to talk about the different things. Now, the pros and cons in this are my pros and cons as a floodplain administrator, not as a homeowner, not as a city council person. This is my, I've got my floodplain administrator lens on when I do these pros and cons. So the no-action, there's no notification, other than Urban Drainage sends out a mailing. And this is the example, their mailing they send out. They do that annually, anybody that's in any of their flood hazard areas, whether they're on the FAM map or not. So people should know that they've got a flood hazard there. The flood insurance requirement is voluntary, which, as a floodplain administrator, that's not a good thing, because people just tend not to do voluntary things to protect themselves, and sometimes we want to make them do things. The flood insurance rates is a positive because it'd be really low. They're outside of a mapped FAM, therefore their flood insurance rate would likely be less than $500 a year, because they get a preferred risk policy that they're outside of a mapped floodplain. There would be no flood regulations under that, which means somebody could build something that might put themselves or their neighbors in additional risk, because they've blocked a floodway or they've done something to prevent something. And there'd be no changes to our CRS program. If we go with option two, which is adopt a city floodplain or the PIA, then they would be notified, again, Urban Drainage's mailing. I would add them to our mailing, which we could do under option one. We could add them to our mailing too. There's just a little more teeth in it, you say you're now subject to city regulations. And the city requirement and state requirements disclose that they're in a floodplain would kick in. If you're going to sell your house and you're in one of these mapped areas, you'll be notified by somebody that you're in there, and you need to disclose that when you sell your house. Flood insurance would still be voluntary to this option, because it's not a federal requirement, and the flood insurance would still be less than $500 a year for most people. The city code would now kick in, so if you want to do something that's in the mapped area of the floodplain on your property, you've got to come get a floodplain permit from me. If you want to add on to your house and do those different kinds of things, you've got to come get a permit to make sure that what you're building doesn't, isn't at risk of flooding, it's that we reduce that risk. And then we'd actually gain some points in our CRS program, because we're regulating areas outside of the mapped floodplain. So that's the second option. So there's three of my pros and two of my cons on that one. So the third thing, which most floodplain administrators always want to regulate everything fully, to the fullest extent they possibly can, but we're also human, so I have some issues with option three. So option one is you get that full notification spectrum, just like all of our other floodplains. If you go to buy a house or a property that's in the floodplain, then you get notified of the need for federally backed, so you know that you've got a floodplain there, when you want to buy the place. The flood insurance becomes mandatory, which is a pro in my mind most of the time. However, the cost becomes an issue on that, because you're now in the floodplain. And most of the floodplains are very shallow, they're six inches to a foot, maybe a foot and a half deep. So the likelihood, most houses are going to be pretty much at or maybe even above the flood elevation. So most of the flood insurance for the 62 houses we've got down there would probably be around $1,500 a year or less. However, if you've, we've got, as we were doing the search on the properties, four of them showed up as garden level, which means they've got some kind of something below grade, which means their insurance rates might be like $5,000 a year. And 18 of them had basements, which means their insurance rates would eventually be like $20,000 to $25,000 a year. So that's a huge giant con to me, because that's a lot of money to spend on flood insurance. The city code would apply, and then we actually might lose some points, because our ratio of open space to non-open space would get worse, because we've just added some floodplain stuff that's not open space to our stuff. So there are three pros and two cons in my, as a floodplain administrator mine, on this one. So just talk about flood insurance. If you're in a newly mapped area, you start out at about $500 a year. It's not quite as low as that I'm out of the floodplain, but it's pretty low still. It's called, and I don't remember the name of it, but it's a newly mapped rate that you get about $500 a year. That increases annually by 18 to 25% a year. So first year, you're at $500, and so if it's your primary residence, 80%. If it's not your primary, if it's a rental property or you have your vacation home in Wheat Ridge or something like that, then it's going to go up by 25% a year. So if I start at 500, the next year I'm at 625, the next year I'm at something higher than that. And I've got in the council memo, I showed like at year 10, you're at three times the rate or five times the rate, depending on which one of those things you are. So you start ratcheting up very quickly, and the farther you go, you ratchet up faster as you go, because it's a cumulative thing. The full risk rate, which is that rate that you end up with eventually, is based on your elevation above or below the base flood elevation. And we've got flood elevations established for all of these floodplains. So eventually, you'd need to get an elevation certificate, because you've got to tell FEMA where you are in relation to floodplains. So that's another additional cost if it becomes part of the mapped floodplain, the FAM. If you let your policy lapse, or you don't get one within the first year, and then you get one later, so if you don't get one and then you sell your house two years later, that person comes in at the full risk rate. There's not a ratcheting up, because they had the opportunity as far as FEMA is concerned. So this is a graphic, this is from 2012, so the numbers have changed since then. But back in the day, everyone just pretty much paid the same amount for flood insurance, which seemed unfair to this guy. This guy was getting a deal, right? This guy's like 10 feet below, he's going to get wet a lot more often than the guy that's a foot above. So what FEMA's done with this policy that they enacted back in 2012 and amended slightly in 2014, is they base these full risk rates, so this house that's one foot above might pay $900 to $900 a year for flood insurance. The guy that's one foot below, this is how quickly the numbers go up, is up over $5,000. The guy that's 10 feet below is up around $25,000. So that's the eventual impact if we were to adopt this as a mapped floodplain as a FAM. So we've got 62 buildings that are in the floodplain. 40 of those don't show garden level or basement on the Jefferson County records. Four of those show garden levels, so they'd be in that $5,000 to $6,000 a year range. And 18 of those buildings have basements, which means they're eight to 10 feet below, so they're eventually $20,000 to $25,000 for flood insurance. And this is what our floodplain map looks like. So this is Teller Street here. This is 26th. This is that little piece of Edgewater that sticks up into Wheat Ridge. This is 29th, and then 30 seconds up at the top. And then over here, off this way is Sheridan. So this all comes down before we get to Sheridan. So the Denver Water Ashland Reservoir is right here, just to orient you on the east side on where we are. So all the houses that are shown in, this mouse is touchy, in purple are just the structures that are just in the floodplain and likely would pay that lower amount. The houses shown in green, which are just four of them down here, show those as being garden level, so they've got some kind of a walkout or below grade thing. They're going to have very expensive. And then the ones with basements are, there's several here and then a few scattered up in here. So like this house is barely touched by the floodplain, this, I think those are apartments actually, barely touched by the floodplain, but because they've got basements, they might end up with insurance rates over $20,000 a year in about 15 years. So again, these are options. Staff is recommending that we do option number two, because we increase our notification requirements, we then get the opportunity to regulate those properties to help them, whatever they build new or something, it won't be additional risk for them. And then we have a little bit more of an alert thing with that real estate notification for them to know that someone's got flood insurance, and we encourage them mightily to go get flood insurance, because they might get wet. So that's what staff's, I think option three is just way too onerous at this point.
Ms. Hoppe.
So option number two is we let them know they're in the floodplain, encourage them to go and get the insurance, but it doesn't regulate that they have to go get the insurance. It does however mean that when they sell their house, they have to inform the people that they're selling their house to, that they are in the floodplain. But those people still can voluntarily get the floodplain insurance?
Yes, yes. So option two is the flood insurance is always voluntary. And then the other thing is that we would have the opportunity to regulate what they're doing to try to not, to protect them from themselves, if you will, that they wouldn't increase their risk or potentially do something that might cause a risk to their neighbor because of the floodplain.
Do we have current regulations in our planning or building codes that would address those issues?
If we did option one, the only thing we do is we look at what's immediately around the house and that kind of a thing. So someone could, if they were going to add on to their house or scrape it and build a new house, they could build a house that was, had a finished floor a foot below the flood elevation, which means they might get wet if we get 100-year flood. So if we regulate it by option two, then we'd make them build a foot above that elevation so that they would have decreased risk of flooding if we had 100-year event. So that's the idea behind us adding this as an area that we would regulate as a city, was to try to make sure that anything new that happens, happens in a way that reduces their risk.
And we currently have those regulations in place, or we would develop those as we go forward?
We'd use our existing regs. I would come back to you at a later date to adopt these floodplain areas as PIAs or whatever name we come up with. And then that would be something we start regulating. We'd do a neighborhood, we'd do a public meeting with all the folks that are affected, invite everybody to the meeting, and we'd do that full outreach and go through the ordinance process and all that stuff.
And does this situation occur in any other parts of our city?
We don't have any other floodplains that are mapped on the FAD that are not already[1622.38] flood planes on our FARM maps. Now, certainly as time goes by, if we find areas that we think are potential flood hazards during the 100-year event, then we can certainly come back to council at that point and say, "Hey, we've got another area that's mapped that we think we'd like to add" and, and those kind of things. Right now, we're just, we sort of know the areas that might get wet and we knew this area might get wet and we try to watch for those and make sure the developers build to get that offsite water through that property. For instance, like the several developments we've got, the Quail Developments down around 32nd Avenue, those have all got facilities built into them that convey the 100-year storm. Even though they're not mapped flood planes, we've made sure those houses are not built in those areas. So, we're, we're, is, you know, for those kind of developments, we can do some things. It's the existing developments of someone adding on to their house or scraping or rebuilding that we just really don't have any way to regulate those outside of adopting these areas as, as PIAs.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. By the way, thank you, Mark, too, because once in a while, my grumpy old hat gets a little tight around the headband and I get testy. The, is there historical data for flooding? I have two questions. A, is there any, what's the historical data for flooding in these areas that we're wanting to add to the flood plane? Has it actually been a problem? And when you say insurance is mandatory by whose, or voluntary by whose standards, I would, would, if they're designated that way, I'm pretty sure the lending companies may not consider it voluntary, but two questions really.
Sure. So, I'll do the second one first. So, regarding the insurance, certainly if the lending company finds out this is a PIA, they may say, "Thou shalt go buy flood insurance." They can do that. They can make it mandatory, but it'll be at that preferred risk rate of something less than $500 a year. So, that's the big difference is if it, if we go with option three, then it kicks in all those FEMA requirements for elevations and stuff. The option two doesn't do that. To answer the first question, you know, most of our areas that we received complaints about flooding were, we sort of fixed with our 29th Avenue project and the pond that we put at Richard Hart Estate. That was sort of east of Finn Street. We have had some complaints of flooding through these areas. You know, my basement got wet, my garage got wet, you know, different things like that. But I don't, I haven't done a check to see if we've actually had a 100-year event in those areas in the last, you know, 20 years or something. So, but we have had some reports. I want to say it was off of Teller Street in the past and, and one of the roads east of Teller, I can't remember the exact name, where someone said, "Well, my basement flooded because the water ran in through the, through the, down the driveway and hit my basement" and that kind of thing. So, we do have storm sewer along all of these paths that are shown on that map. So, we do have storm sewer there that's in place that really helps during those minor storm events and, and even up until like a 25-year event or a 50-year event, it probably all stays in the street. It's when we get that 100-year event, there's a chance of these folks getting wet.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot what I was going to ask for a second.
It's a long night.
Yeah, well, and I just like got, came straight from the airport to here, so. So, currently, if someone is attempting to build a property where they maybe have a walk, where they have a basement or a walkout basement or something like that and it's in the flood area that we know about, when they go to get their building permit, then at that point, do we say, "You can't build your basement because you're in a flood area"?
Not under our current regulations. And if we, if we do the no action, then I don't have a regulatory mechanism to say, "Hey, you really got to do this a different way." Building code would look at, "Do I have localized drainage? Is the, is the finished floor up enough and that slopes away for at least 10 feet?" All those things that normally kick in around the houses and stuff, but there's nothing that would say, "You need to have your finished floor at least this high" in order to, in order to do something. And, you know, if someone wanted to build a basement when they flood plane areas, they certainly could. We'd make sure that everything, the ground around it is up high enough and that main finished floor is up high enough. We wouldn't prohibit a basement. It wouldn't affect their insurance rates, but they'd have to do some things to try to protect themselves from that risk that they've got.
So, we could potentially though, put in our code that if they're in, without, without having to adopt a flood, a flood plane, we could still put that in our code that when they come for a building permit, if they're in these areas, regardless of adopted flood plane, because they're in that area, that they would have to change their building so that it goes along with, "Whatever we say, you're in a flood plane, so your floor has to be a foot above."
Yeah.
We don't have to say it's a flood plane to put that into our code.
Right. And we can call it just that PIA. We can call it that potential inundation area where, where we adopt the map. We have to, we have to adopt something for me to regulate against. So, we can adopt this map as a, as a PIA area that it's not going to show up as a flood plane on anything, anything that FEMA's got or, or when the lenders are requiring things. Certainly, if they find out that this scenario might get wet, they might require flood insurance, but it'd be that cheaper rate. I don't really have a way to, and I don't think I could open-endedly sort of say, "If there's any, you know, potential flooding area, then I can regulate those based on flood plane." We've got to adopt something and put something, a line on the map so I can show someone, "Here's the line on the map" and that kind of thing. So, so to do what you're asking, we pretty much need to do option number two, if that makes sense.
Additional comments or questions? Is there a consensus on council to proceed with option number two? We have consensus to proceed with option number two.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything further on this item?
I am done.
If you have nothing further on this item, that will conclude item number two, Sloane's Lake FEMA mapping. We will move to item number three, staff reports. Staff's a little thin tonight, so we'll move on. We will move on to item number four, elected officials' reports. Do any of the elected officials have some reporting to do? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you enjoy the time with your family and your friends. I am very thankful to live, work and play in Wheat Ridge. And if anybody wants to come and get their sweat on before they stuff their faces, I will be doing a kickboxing workout at Cage Fitness Wheat Ridge from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. on Thursday. It's off 3964 Youngfield Street, so if you want to come burn some calories with me, I welcome you to come check it out. Thank you.
Are those skills, are those skills that might be applicable and usable later on in the afternoon? Is that with your relatives? Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'd like, I'd like to read something into the public record with permission of my colleagues.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, please proceed.
Mayor Starker, city council and staff. It has been my privilege to serve our beloved community on the Wheat Ridge City Council. Together, we have made tremendous strides and moved our city forward through innovation, inclusivity and diversity. I am proud that during my tenure, the leadership of our great city has begun to better reflect its population, ensuring that everyone has a seat at the table. I have always believed that being a public servant is a privilege not to be taken lightly. While we may not always agree, I have found the input of my colleagues on city council to be invaluable in my mission to do better the lives of the people of Wheat Ridge. I am humbled and honored to have been chosen by our community to be their next representative in the Colorado State Legislature. I look forward to working closely with each and every one of you in my new role and I hope that you will consider me a resource while I serve in the Capitol. My office will always be open to you. I hereby tender my formal resignation from city, from Wheat Ridge City Council District One effective December 31st, 2018. And I request a consensus that at the next meeting, we activate our plan for choosing a new replacement.
Can you read who that letter was from?
Oh, that letter, excuse me, yeah.
That sincerely?
There's a little detail in there, yeah. That is from Monica Duran, Representative-elect HD24.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for the reminder of the oversight. Yeah. I guess, you know, we all have this letter, so I, I thought, you know, I'm just thinking everybody knows. So, do we have a consensus that we bring up on the next regular meeting, the activation of our replacement plan?
Okay, we have consensus to do that. Any further public officials' reports? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everybody in the city that the NRS, the Neighborhood Revitalization Study, is still taking place and there are still meetings available where people can come forth and express their opinions on how we're doing as a city, where we need to go, where we don't need to go. I think today is just, was especially important because if you notice, there were a lot of people here at the study session today talking about the 52nd Avenue issue and without citizen input, we cannot intelligently and knowledgeably govern. So, I urge everybody to become involved in the NRS and I know we have some notifications on our homepage on, on the website and I thank the city staff for that.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, the issue regarding the property at 45th and Wazareth is an issue that remains and while staff's not here to discuss it, I think that we need to continue to try to figure out a resolution to the Zendaghi daycare property. So, at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, I think we need to at least have a discussion with staff or come up with some kind of resolution relative to that concern.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Proten, would you put that on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Further, further public officials, elected officials' reports and I want to, our attorney would like to make a little clarification on the item that Mr. Fitzgerald put forward.
On the council vacancy, a couple of you have asked me about this and since you're all here, I should just confirm for all of you. The, the position isn't vacant such that you can make an appointment until the 31st of December, but you could certainly, you know, put in place procedures and sort of gear up for that, but it's, the position isn't open until actually December 31 and so you don't have power to actually make the appointment until after December 31st. And I think a couple of you have asked about it that and I want to make sure you all heard it.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
And just a clarification, the appointment doesn't need to be made until 30 days after December 31st.
That's correct. Thanks. Thanks for asking. You've got a 30-day window to make the appointment and, and so, yeah, that starts running on the first adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I noticed a lot of people here talking on 52nd Avenue, you know, which was good. So, all right, that's, if there's no further business to come before the council, we'll stand adjourned?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to just ask, there, there was talk, I think, Ms. Hoppe, you brought that up about having a better process. The city clerk's office has already had some inquiries about how do we get an application